First, we need permission to go into executive session to allow Counselor Azadi to do it. Off.
If I could, the remote participation, Mayor.
Yeah.
So, a question for City Council as we start your agenda for the pre-meeting this evening. We do have an executive session proposed for the pre-meeting, as well as two exec sessions for post-meeting. And I would just ask if there could be a motion to allow for remote participation for Counselor Azadi, and also for Counselor Ireland, should she decide to join us for the post-meeting executive sessions.
Motion, so moved. Second? Motion and second, that outside folks, Counselor Azadi and Counselor Ireland, will be able to participate in executive session. Do we just vote?
Just, yeah, no voice votes, fine.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the first item on the pre-meeting tonight is a proposed executive session for consultation with special counsel regarding Court of Appeals Case 2023 CA 351, City of Westminster versus R. Dean Hawn interests for legal advice pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C3 and Colorado Revise Statute 2464024B.
So, I'll go around the room and ask if you're willing to go in the executive session and keep things confidential.
Amber Hart, yes. Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Sarah Nermella, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Jodi Andrews, yes.
Larry Dorr, yes.
Don Hollister, yes.
Barbara Opie, yes.
Paul Kneppel, yes.
Rick Graham, yes.
Abby Kitch, yes.
Dave Frankel, yes, and Counselor Azadi?
Counselor Azadi, can you?
I'll read that yet.
Okay, thank you. So, I would just ask the clerk to pause the live stream of the meeting and begin a recording of our executive session so that we can engage in the discussion as described.
Someone at my table, we kind of changed the configuration a little bit because the light, the LED light, and I understand we need light, but it was causing a headache, so we had to switch. But I thought it was really good. I've gotten really good feedback. I thought that the table I was at, they were really engaged. And I thought that it was really helpful having subject matter experts. So, when they had specific questions that I wouldn't be able to answer, I had two people at the table who could answer, and I thought that was really helpful. Instead of, you know, having to get back to somebody or, you know, not knowing what the answer is, getting that answer right then and there. And, you know, the officer and the firefighter at my table, there was some specific questions, you know, directed at them, like some, you know, special issues, you know, in their neighborhood, and it was just really nice for them to have that opportunity to ask those questions. And so, I thought it was great.
I thought it was fantastic. My suggestions are, the two chiefs did fantastic. But like when Chief Burke showed the alert first, and that it would go on everybody's fridge. Let's face it, we all love trinkets. Anything that was at those back tables that none of us made it to should have been in front and in each seat. Because even if people had whatever the trinket was, they would have taken that home, given it to one of their kids or to a neighbor, it wouldn't have gone to waste. So, I just think we need to think of that. Each person needed a set of questions. I was yelling so much. The other table was right here, the other table was right here. I'm trying to take care of these 10, and I can't yell loud enough for them to hear. They, everybody should have the set of questions so they can read it, they know what's coming. And all of it, we were way too close together, is my only complaint. And I think some people in the back that didn't have tables got a little rowdy a couple of times, so we couldn't hear, but we needed more space. It just, even people coming in a little bit later couldn't really tell where there were places to sit and stuff. So, I like your idea for closing, and not, it doesn't have to be any one of us because we just kept repeating things over and over and over. So, but the two chiefs did fantastic. Having the two people, like you said, at our tables, so we don't have to be the experts, and they chimed right in, I think was great. Counselor Azadi?
Yeah, I thought it was great. The main, the main feedback I heard was that we could have had it at least two to three times the size of the audience if we advertised it better. They feel, so we do a lot of social media promotion for these things, but lots of folks don't use that. So, many people didn't know about it, especially in the surrounding area. So, folks were saying, well, we should have done postcards through the surrounding area or something to diversify how we promote it.
I did actually ask my table, because we had two property owners that don't live in Westminster but own property come. And so, it made me just ask, how many of you use social media? Half of my table, and it wasn't all elderly, said they do not look at any of the social media. So, then they So then they started, same as you, Obi, they started asking, what other kinds of ways do we share? Because it can't just always be Facebook. Counselor Demott?
A hundred percent of my table said they don't use social media. And they were also a hundred percent said that they would like some sort of text message. But they talked a lot about the same thing, about us educating, like a lot of the things that the firefighter and police officers shared, they didn't know about. So like, well, how do you learn about these things? Because they wanted to be empowered to know. Like we talked about, maybe using the Parks and Rec guide, because that goes to everybody's. And they had talked about the mailer we used to do, and maybe doing something specific around, an issue that's specific around public safety. So they, you know, same kind of thing. We heard at all the tables, they just wanted more communication in different ways.
And I think a sign up at each table, because we can better handle that. Even if this person comes in later, one of us can make sure they get signed ups. Because standing in line, people don't like that. And just have everything, wherever they're going to sit, available, and have the trinkets there for them. And I just think we could make it just a little bit. But you did a great job, Chief.
Mayor, may I add one thing?
Sure.
If we are going to have, I like your idea of having things at the table. If we're not going to be giving the same report out, it might be easier if we had something smaller to write down people's suggestions on, because that takes up pretty much the entire table.
Yeah, wiped everybody out.
So if we're not going to be giving the presentation at the end, then something smaller.
Yeah, use a notebook or whatever, yeah. Does that help you?
Very helpful. Thanks. Thank you all.
Let me see, what else was on my, my purse is up there. What else did I want to ask you guys? I don't know, I may have to ask in post-session. But that was the main thing, yeah?
For tonight's agenda, did we need to talk about what's on and off? I know that Counselor Ireland had asked, so is that already off the consent agenda?
Did we take? We did take it off.
Thank you.
Well, you have one minute to do a bathroom break or whatever, and we'll see you at the dais.
One second, let me make sure we have everybody on.
Can I get a, can Counselor Azadi and Counselor Ireland let me know that they're on the meeting, please? Very well, thank you, Counselor Ireland. Counselor Ireland, we hear you very well. Counselor Azadi?
Yay! Welcome to tonight's meeting of August 26, 2024. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council Meeting for August 26, 2024. We thank you for coming, and we'd like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session, as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome, and remind attendees there's an expectation that this meeting shall not be disrupted and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition. For any speakers, signs and placards are prohibited, and all attendees shall remain seated in their seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Do you want to do? Do we need to do roll call first, or allow the outsiders?
Go ahead and do roll call first, and then do the motion to, okay, roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demott.
Present.
Counselor Azadi. Counselor Haat.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we allow remote participation of Counselor Azadi and Counselor Ireland.
A second. Mayor Protem, thank you for the second. It's been moved and seconded to allow remote participation tonight of Counselor Ireland and Counselor Azadi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to the consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting, minutes of August 12th and August 19th. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the August 12th and August 19th, 2024 meetings as presented.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 12th and August 19th, 2024. Is there any further discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to our fun evening of presentations for employee service awards. We have 20 to 30 years, and couldn't be more proud. Those of you that have family members here, friends, neighbors, bring them down with you, please. I've been known to go in the audience and pick you up and bring you in here. So it's time to celebrate your person and the years they've spent with the city. And we want to say thank you to you two for allowing them to do that. So first up is Counselor Carmelia.
Good evening, everyone. Do we have Eric Anderson? Excellent, come on up.
Ooh, she said no.
Are you sure there's a photo involved? Okay, all right, give me a moment here, let me find you. There we are, okay. There's a lot to hold, so I hope you don't drop everything. Here you go. Thanks for being up here tonight.
Yeah.
To meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
All right, let's see, I think this one's for me. 20 years, okay. Eric Anderson was hired in 2004 as a firefighter, and was promoted to fire paramedic in 2006. Eric has served as a member of the Honor Guard, hazmat team lead, and is currently on the dive rescue team. Eric has also competed at the World Championships for the Firefighter Combat Challenge. Eric has been married for 15 years to his wife Laura, and together they have a son, Toby. During his spare time, he enjoys spending time at the lake with his family and traveling as much as possible. Where do you usually travel to?
Anywhere.
Anywhere. Well, 20 years, thank you so much for your service. That's quite impressive. All right, I know you keep taking photos. Somebody else?
Come on, one picture, come on.
No, okay, okay. Well.
Any favor, and hold that envelope behind the plaque?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right, and how you want me to pose?
Yep.
This is behind me, we'll hide it.
All right, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Thank you so much. All right, do we have Matthew Meyer here? Excellent, come on up. Please bring anyone else you'd like. Okay, I'm going to hand this over to you, and don't drop it, because there's a lot of things here. Here we are. Also 20 years, my goodness. Congratulations. Good to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
All right. Matt Meyer was hired in September 2004, and he is currently the senior firefighter on truck six on the A shift. Over his 20-year career, Matt has received several life-saving awards and an outstanding service award. From 2005 until 2013, Matt represented the Westminster Fire Department in the Firefighter Combat Challenge competition, which is a competition designed to simulate the potential physical demands of real-life structured fire operations. Matt and his team competed against firefighters around the world, and in 2012, won the World Championship. Wow, congratulations. Matt has partnered with charitable organizations and helped raise thousands of dollars for child burn victims at Children's Hospital. Matt was a member of the metro area dive team for 15 years, where he was a certified dive rescue specialist I and a swift water rescue specialist II. For the past 15 years, Matt has served as a member of the department's fitness committee. In this role, he helps develop and implement physical fitness training for fellow firefighters and fitness testing for potential recruit firefighters. Matt is also a member of the Fire Department's peer support team. On this team, Matt serves as a resource and advocate for fellow firefighters, not just in this organization, but for firefighters across the metro area. In his free time, Matt enjoys spending time with his beautiful girlfriend Lindsay and their golden retriever, Moose. He enjoys traveling, paddle boarding, camping, golfing, and projects around the house. Matt is looking forward to the next several years, working for the Fire Department, and helping to make a difference in the lives of the community he grew up in. Thank you so much. It's a great name for a dog, Moose.
You guys take one step that way for me.
All right.
All right, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again. All right. Do we have John Dean Passarelli here? Excellent, come on up. Want to bring anybody you have with you? Come on up.
My wife and my mother.
Excellent. Good evening.
Thanks for bringing the brave thoughts.
Here, would you like to introduce, here, go ahead and introduce who you have with you?
This is my wife Stacy and my mother, Joanne.
Hi. Hi, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. Thank you for being here. All right, here you go. Congratulations. Don't drop anything. Okay, John Dean Passarelli. Did I say that right?
You said right.
Excellent, it's us Italians, you know. Was hired as a police officer in 1994 and assigned to patrol in the police department. In 1998, he served as a motor officer in the traffic unit, A field training instructor, a level-three traffic investigator, and a laser instructor. From 2004 to 2007, Dean was a burglary detective and was the lead detective in the lottery ticket burglar case, which was highly publicized as the suspect committed multiple burglaries in six cities. Say that five times fast. In 2007, Dean became the traffic detective and investigated 1,253 traffic-related cases during his tenure, with cases ranging from hit-and-run accidents, felony DUIs, vehicular assaults, and vehicular homicides. In July 2022, Dean became a court martial at the Westminster Municipal Court. In addition, he has been an officer, survival instructor for 23 years, and a member of the North Metro Technical Accident Investigation Team. Dean received an L. Jabel?
L. Jabel.
Shriners Meritorious Service and Dedication Award, a Chief's Commendation Award, and numerous teams in action awards during his career. Wow. Dean enjoys spending time with his wife Stacy, his 25-year-old daughter Talia, and his 21-year-old son Daniel. He also enjoys fly fishing and golfing. Congratulations. Thank you so much. 30 years.
Perfect, let's all get together for the photo. All right, looking right here, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Brian Carlson, come on down. But I was expecting a four-legged friend here, too.
Well, you were working on that.
Little Rue wasn't good enough tonight?
Well, Steph, I was rude tonight.
Rue, he's good.
Good, he's good. Would you introduce everybody?
Yeah, for sure. This is, I'm Brian Carlson, this is my wife Steph, this is my daughter Amanda, she works over in dispatch, my mom Jackie, and my brother Derek.
Well, I have a certificate and pin for you, but for your wife. I have the $2,500 that he earned.
I can buy more pugs.
Yes.
Yeah, buy more pugs. I have two new ones, you know, Gabby and Gibbs, yeah. You haven't met them.
Nope.
Now, is yours fawn or black?
He's fawn.
I've got two blacks.
And see, not everybody knows the story, we got Otis through you, too.
Yes.
And Otis is passed.
Oh.
But we got Rue.
Anytime I find a pug that needs a home. I was even at, where was I? I was in Nantucket. And found him a pug, so. We're, we're pug lovers.
Right.
Brian Carlson is the city's PGA Head Golf Professional at Walnut Creek Preserve and was born and raised in Westminster. Brian was honored in 2018 PGA Merchandiser of the Year for excellence in superior skills in the promotion of the golf, game of golf. Over the past twenty-five years, Walnut Creek Golf Preserve has provided championship public golf experience through the region with over eight hundred thousand rounds of golf played on its links and has held some of Colorado's most prestigious golf championships, including twenty-six United States Golf Association Championship Qualifiers, thirteen Colorado Golf Association Champions, seven American Junior Golf Association Champions, three Colorado Senior Open Championships, and five Westminster Opens. Looking back, Brian is extremely proud of everything the City of Westminster team has done to be able to accomplish over the years. However, the highlight has been working day-to-day with an outstanding team of people committed to service in our community. Most importantly, Brian is grateful to be able to advance the careers of his assistant professionals and golf leadership roles in their own. Brian is married to his wife Stephanie, and together they have two daughters, Amanda and Maddie. And in addition, they're learning to live with a high-energy rescue pug named Rue. I gotta get over and meet him. Is he at the store?
No.
Oh, Otis was always at the store.
He's still too wild for that.
Well, give him a hug for me.
You got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I get you guys to take one big step this way?
Yeah.
Yep, we'll try to center as best we can.
Yep.
Great, thanks, guys. Everyone look in here, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I ask you to help me up here with the Triple Crown winner? I don't see anything I'm supposed to present. Somebody maybe has something. Our Deputy City Manager Larry Dorr, in charge of finance, I will let you take the reins.
Thank you, Mayor. Allow our team to come forward. Welcome. All right, they're still coming.
I saw some clothes being delivered, so he could come up here.
Yes, ma'am. That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, it's the council members, and good evening, everyone. My name is Larry Dorr, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer of the City of Westminster. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce, and thank you for time on the agenda, that our city has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Triple Crown, and I'm going to allow those responsible here on the team for those various awards to describe what they are and allow them to introduce themselves. But I'll just tell you, as the city's finance chief, at my twenty-three years of municipal government experience, this is an excellent financial money team, and they are committed to best practices. They are committed to transparency and excellence in all financial affairs of the city. So with that, I'm going to go to my right first, and then we'll bring the microphone back and folks can introduce themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Uh, my name is Chris Lindsay, I'm the Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff, and I would like to introduce Erin Fariter, our Policy and Budget Administrator, Mandy Lemig, a Senior Management Analyst, and Teresa Boco, Policy and Budget Coordinator. We have a couple of additional staff who are under the weather this evening, but we're certainly thinking about them. Uh, we're really pleased to have received the Government Finance Officers Award Letter of Recognition for the Budget Document that the city produces on your behalf every year. Uh, it certifies that the budget that we create is transparent, it's a solid operational document, uh, it's strategic, and it represents the will of the people and the council. Uh, we worked really hard on that, and just last week, we released the 2025 proposed budget document, uh, upwards of three hundred pages, uh, and we hope to continue the tradition of receiving the, uh, the GFOA Award. So, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Sheri Sanchez, I'm the Accounting Manager for the City of Westminster, and I'm here with, um, a part of my team who produces the comprehensive annual financial report, and that's what we're here tonight to be recognized for. The city has received its fortieth award for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and that's a significant, a significant achievement. And, um, our document, our annual financial report, really communicates the city's financial story. Uh, it's the biggest project that we undertake each year. I have the core audit team is a baker's dozen of folks, some are here tonight, and, um, I'm just so thankful and, uh, really proud of all the work that they've put into producing the document over the years. Um, and, you know, we implemented a lot of governmental, governmental accounting standards, and I know, um, over the years, each year, you're committed to the audit and getting the financial report done. You spend many hours above and beyond your regular schedule to, um, produce the document and to, for, so that we have a clean audit each year, so, thank you, thank you very much. And I'm going to pass the mic this way, if you'd please introduce yourselves.
I'm Jennifer Thomas, I'm the payroll supervisor.
Don Cartier, an accountant.
Gary Newcomb, accountant.
Sheri Young, Senior Financial Analyst.
Lori Stevens, accountant.
Well, to you, the community, I think you deserve, these folks deserve a hand for forty years and doing all that they do so that we have a great budget. The budget is out, so it's time to look at it, because that's what we're going to be spending our weekends doing, um, until we pass it in October. But please give them a hand for forty years of excellence. And do you have our picture?
I have one from back there, but let's do one altogether. So we're going to do two rows, we're going to do six in the front, six in the back.
We can't do math.
Deputy Dorr gets in the back, he's tall.
Yep, I was saying, Larry, you can stay toward the front.
Okay. Right here.
Let's go. Thank you, yep, there you go, thank you, Chris, and then, you want, you want to step up over there? Larry, feel free to step up.
Yes, sir.
There we go. All right, just make sure you can see me, and then I should be able to see you. Perfect. All right, thanks, guys, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
That brings us to public comment. Portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council. Each participant is given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there's a public hearing scheduled for an item for which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when that public hearing is called. Tonight, there are no public hearings. This evening, the city clerk informed me that we have received three emails, zero voicemails. By the deadline, they've been transcribed and posted online in the packet and forwarded director, directly to city council. City clerk, would you please call our first life speaker?
The first speaker is Joe Demott.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak again. Back on the twenty-second of July, uh, the, the public, um, that's what's for basic, can't hear? Hello, hello? I don't know, it's not on. I reclaim my time, by the way. Hello? Hello, hello, hello?
Just a pause for a moment, sir.
Just be a moment.
Yeah, our IT is going to check why that's not working.
Got it.
IT people.
IT people, they're all.
That might be.
Okay, well, it's really loud now. Okay, can everybody hear? I guess so. Okay, on the twenty-second of July, uh, we had quite a conversation about opting out of the state bill on CCW permits in sensitive areas and all that. Um, and I know there was a lot of discussion about what the Second Amendment was, what it wasn't, a lot of different, um, people's opinions, and ninety-nine percent of it, let's face it, was opinion. I do want to say that I think a lot of people, um, in the room kind of acted like it was really a far-fetched idea, like, why would we be doing this? It's really crazy. I just wanted to bring forth publicly, in front of the council and others that are listening, that it's over twelve cities now in the, in the state have opted out of that. So it's not such a crazy idea, and maybe you guys will reconsider sometime down the line. Um, but my concern tonight isn't even about the Second Amendment. Uh, there was a, um, a, I listened to the discussion after I got home of the council, and Councilwoman, uh, Haute stated that in 2010, the Supreme Court had made a decision saying that the, the Second Amendment was null and void because now we have a military, which they, her premise was that back when the Second Amendment was developed, we had no actual military and that there had to be a Second Amendment. I just wanted to bring forth that publicly, that that just plain isn't true. And I don't believe that the council, anyone on the council, should be able to make statements as fact about law in front of everyone that is not true. And I think the city attorney would, I believe, would agree with me. And I think that something needs to be said about that, whether it be, uh, you know, public repentance or whatever you want to call it, to say that that's not true, um, that the Supreme Court did not say that in 2010 or did not say that anytime after that. Um, you know, we all have opinions, and I just don't believe that that was an opinion. I believe that was a statement of fact, and it's just not the truth, and it isn't a fact. So, whatever can be done, whether it be, you know, just a plain statement from the city council that, you know, we're sorry that shouldn't have been said, or whatever, because public safety is a big thing. And I know that, that night, there was a lot of different opinions being spewed out there, you know, even by the council as far as, well, how, you know, homelessness is more important than this. Well, I think that was kind of degrading to the people that were up here stating, you know, our heartfelt feeling about what's going on in the country and in the city. So I think that it would be a slippery slope to not be able to address something that was that way. I, I don't want to make it in any way personal, I think it could have been, maybe it was just a mistake. But it does, it is something that needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The next speaker is Chris Alred.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Hi, my name is Chris Alred, and I'm commenting for Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. Just returning here to follow up about the Rocky Mountain Greenway. I think it's important to keep this topic in the public forum for transparency, and we're wondering when the next discussion on this topic will occur. We continue to hear more interest from the community to be kept up to date on this decision. Some have asked, who stands to benefit? Well, the Department of Energy stands to benefit, which is why they provide funding for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the CDPAG, and the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. This is a case of regulatory capture. The Department of Energy oversaw environmental crimes at Rocky Flats. Their contractor, Rockwell, pled guilty to those environmental crimes. The Rocky Mountain Greenway does not benefit this community. It may appear so in the short term, but in the long term, it only attempts to solve, solve a serious problem by looking away. We need our elected officials to set a precedent now that addresses the problem. Let's show the Department of Energy that we are a strong community who will stand up to protect this community's health. And we will not stand for this injustice. We have the tools, the resources, and the network of expertise to understand this situation and make an informed decision. We will not be fooled or pacified by the DOE's claims that the area is safe. We take an active role in protecting this community's health. The only, it's my understanding that Jefferson County has stated something to the effect that the Indiana Street overpass will be built regardless of whether Westminster withdraws. Please don't concede this that the Indiana Street built, that the overpass will be built regardless of Westminster's withdrawal, that this is a chance to set a precedent. The only reason the project has even made it this far is through manufactured consent. There was no informed consent for this project. I've been monitoring it since 2016, and when people know the truth, the majority agree that it should not go forward. So, uh, and don't accept it as a given that Rocky Flats will remain open to the public. Please take action. Uh, the, let's see, I, I'm limited on time, but I was hoping, uh, if you could please send a letter, like, like about the airport, to explain your position. Send a letter that you oppose this project, and also include experts from the July fifteenth study session in your next discussion to make sure that, that there's still a voice from the community in case additional questions arise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Segaloff.
Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Deborah Segaloff from the Colorado Chapter of Physicians and Social Responsibility. I'd like to address the Rocky Mountain Greenway this evening. For the purposes of computer modeling, attempting to determine the health risks of being on the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge, CDPAG utilizes what's termed reference man as their standard for exposure to ionizing radiation. Reference man is a thirty-year-old Caucasian male. Please refer to Figure One on the hand edit that was just distributed. The National Research Council spent years evaluating data related to the effects of ionizing radiation on human health, and their report was published in the reference cited on Figure One. Based upon the known numbers of cancer deaths, after individuals absorbed the same dose of ionizing radiation, the panel developed a risk model that's shown in Figure One. On the horizontal axis are the ages of individuals when exposed to the same dose of ionizing radiation. On the vertical axis are the resulting numbers of lifetime expected deaths from cancer per 100,000 persons. The blue dots represent males, and I've indicated with an arrow what's defined as reference man. The red dots are data for females. Note that all, at all ages of exposure, women face a greater resulting risk of death from cancer than men, with the differences most pronounced at younger ages. from cancer than men, with the differences most pronounced at younger ages. Also note that relative to reference man, children and young adults of both sexes, if exposed to ionizing radiation, face a greater risk of dying from cancer, with the highest risk being for young girls. If you'd please refer to the table on the second page, you can see the increased lifetime risk of death from cancer relative to the thirty-year-old reference man after exposure to the same dose of ionizing radiation. Looking at males, an infant boy has a nearly threefold greater risk, and a five-year-old boy more than twofold increased risk. Are there going to be signs on the overpass to the refuge warning residents from Westminster and elsewhere that they shouldn't be taking their young sons onto the refuge? Looking at females on the table, the numbers are even starker. A ten-year-old girl has a nearly threefold greater risk, and even more alarmingly, a five-year-old girl has a three-and-a-half-fold greater risk, and an infant girl has almost a fivefold increased risk. Well, even more noticeable signs we put up warning residents of Westminster and elsewhere that the young women and girls going into the refuge are going to be so much greater risk of someday dying of cancer due to the potential inhalation of airborne plutonium on the refuge. In closing, withdrawing from the Greenway project may cost Westminster money, but isn't that worth it to protect the young men, women, and children of Westminster?
Thank you, your time is up.
Who may be due to the Greenway recreating on the refuge. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charlene Wiley. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and for the record, my name is pronounced Willie. You have heard from many concerned residents recently about the threat to our water supply from Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. And like the warnings you have just received about the Greenway Trail, these warnings were not the first. In two thousand and twenty-two, Westminster was notified by the PFAS Project Lab that at least three known sites for that contamination were located in Westminster, and that RMMA, which lies just two nautical miles uphill from Stanley Lake, headed that list. So far, the majority of this council has chosen to ignore repeated warnings. In fact, you rejected even Councilor Hott's suggestion for engagement with Jefferson County for a method of prevention and containment of toxins on the airport site. It is hard to witness this irresponsible action in decision-making. I am sure that Martin Kim's, Water Treatment and Quality Manager at the City of Thornton, would agree. Mr. Kim's has been forced to deal with the PFAS contaminations in the water supply that Thornton receives from the South Platte. At least one source could be Suncor, and like RMMA, is a site for a variety of toxins. Had regulators and responsible public officials taken preventative action, perhaps Mr. Kim's would not be dealing with that issue now. And if public health or environment is not your concern, perhaps the cost of cleanup is. In September twenty-three, the Michigan AG sued Grand Rapids Airport over PFAS pollution in well water there. The cost of cleanup was about thirty thousand dollars per household. That translates for Westminster's three hundred thousand households that depend on Westminster water to a cost of nine billion dollars. That fact alone should cause you to take action now. Brighton's, Brighton plans to use granular activated carbon filters just for PFAS. In the water, it provides to more than fifty-five thousand people. Brighton spent nearly six hundred thousand dollars on a new filter system just for its design and inclusion in its new treatment facility. And it will probably have at least another million dollars in expense to replace and dispose of those filters. Unlike Brighton, Westminster's new water treatment facility does not include an infrastructure for such a system. And PFAS is just but one of six or to twelve known or suspected toxins at this airport. By the time they are detected in Stanley Lake waters, the cleanup could be overwhelming, if not impossible. I point to the study session you had on the issue of the Greenway Trail. Set up a session that will actually give you the data that you need to handle this issue responsibly. Invite hydrologists, geophysicists with the expertise you need, and the-
Thank you, your time is up.
Just a moment, please, and the people like Thornton's Martin Kims, who understand what happens when you don't protect water supplies. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Christopher. Welcome.
Welcome. Can I make just one comment? The last time I was here, our comments were five minutes, and now you've changed to three minutes. When did that happen, and what, is that part of the, your rules and regulations? Did that change? Who changed it? The last time I was here, it was five minutes. You, you, I, I think you look back at your minutes, you'll find that it was five minutes.
This is a time for you to talk to us? We don't get back and forth.
Okay. I will write a letter. Okay, I've been coming to this city council meetings for four years. And to tell you the truth, I'm very frustrated, and so is the community, and they should be. Three of you have been on this council for all of these years and have voted against every single community issue regarding Rocky Mountain Airport and matters brought to you by the community. I thought this was supposed to be a fair and constructive decision, but it is not. Let me revisit some examples. On talking about lead, the community brought to you a lead scientist, Dr. Robert Butel, to make a presentation on the dangers of leaded fuel from piston engines. One of you said, since he lived in the affected area, he was biased. Where would somebody have to come from to be able to make a presentation to this group? Durango, or somebody at a place like that? You voted down everything having to do with lead and said it would be solved by two thousand and thirty or sooner. Health can't wait for this clumsy decision. Talk about noise. Community requested that you vote to leave the community roundtable, but you voted to stay. The other community saw the light and voted to get off the community roundtable, and it was disbanded. Also, one of you said the airplane noise didn't bother you, and you know who you are and you live in countryside. Isn't this the same argument you made against the scientist because he lived in the affected area? You should have recused yourself and not voted. Also concerning the main noise issue are the flight schools. Airport Representative Stephanie Corbell, who took Anslo's place when he got fired, said it was the, the very last, at the very last meeting, that they weren't going to add any more flight schools. And then they added one two months ago. Noise is unbearable now. You should have seen the paper this week, last weekend. How Loud Is Too Loud? There's a good article in there, and it tells about what noise does to people's health. And if I had two more minutes, I would have been able to read that to you. But I don't know what it is about this council. Is it money? Is it politics? Or is it just the lack of courage to stand up to this and challenge this more than corrupt airport? Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Farb. Welcome.
In the allotted three minutes here, I cannot parse out the, so many words and phrases in the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget that are meant to demonstrate to this council and to our residents how much the city proclaims it has done and mostly suggests could have been done on behalf of our hundreds, yes, hundreds of unhoused residents. Suffice it to say that the marketing of numbers and statistics within the twenty-twenty-five budget continues to belie the many realities and the conditions of actual human beings within our city. Rights Acting City Manager Jody Andrews, the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget in its entirety advances the city's commitment to justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging for all members of our community. Judge those words for yourself. And despite the seemingly impressive twenty-twenty-four Parks, Recreation, and Libraries accomplishments section on page one sixty-six, it shows what it has done for our unhoused. Well, as far as numbers and statistics go, I want you to read between those lines because there also is a different and more profound reality. Because, members of council, since I and a handful of other street outreach volunteers can attest, after four and a half years of doing street outreach, we continue to see the same people living in the same physically and mentally unsafe, unstabilized conditions those statistics generally ignore. And here's what's blatantly left out. A third navigator is called for, but not included. A city sanctioned and approved safe outdoor space with wraparound services is called for, but not included. By the way, the cost of those new golf carts you approved in May, that would have covered a year's safe outdoor space operation for about sixty people who otherwise wouldn't seem such a bother to other city residences and businesses. And a small cadre of homeless outreach volunteers is called for, but not included. Sure, there are grand plans for Westminster, our Vada Navigation Center sometime in the next few years, but we all know that as Robert Burns penned, "The best-laid schemes of mice and men oft go awry and leave us nothing but pain, grief, and pain." You, members of council, can actually stop this never-ending grief and pain for so many of our growing number of unhoused. You, members of council, can drill down into this buzzet and see where it is lacking. Don't act because time presses you. Act because it's needed for the health, safety, and well-being of all Westminster's people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Westminster. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm Tom Lambo. I'm here to lift Westminster up in prayer. Changing, or, changing cities have national implications. Conventions for the two major political parties here in the U.S. just concluded, and I was able to listen to many of the speeches. I came away with a common theme running through many of the speeches. Many of the speeches invoke God and ask for his blessing. God has many blessings: happiness, fertility, life, abundance, grace, healing, joy, peace, favor, protection, ability, deliverance, restoration, and the list goes on. Both of the major political parties desire God's blessing on America, so tonight we'll honor their petition and pray for God to bless us. The blessing we'll be requesting from God is truth. It's foundation, it's foundational for a healthy society. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus Victoria's name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster. You're always welcome here. Your authority is greater than any other authority. You take direction from no one. Psalm one fifteen-three states, "Our God is in heaven and does whatever he pleases," succinctly stated, "and you rule in truth." Romans one eighteen states, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men, who by their unrighteousness suppress the truth." Father, you have victory over those that suppress the truth, and because we are your people, we share your victory. Father, I lift up Westminster to you and ask that your blessing of truth touch everyone in all areas of their lives, of their lives. You are aligned with truth. You cannot come against it. Truth matters to you, and truth matters to us, especially with a historic decision in front of us. Daily, we are subjected to enormous amounts of information. Some is truth, and some hints at truth. Second Timothy two seven says, "Think over what I say, for the Lord will give you understanding in everything." Let your word come alive in our lives. Give us the understanding needed to discern what we hear. New cycles are fast, and our lives are busy. It's difficult to get it right all the time. John ten fourteen states, "I am the good shepherd; I know my sheep, and my sheep know me." Provide, guide, and protect us. We need you to be the shepherd of truth in our lives to guide us through all the information out there. And in John eight thirty-two, you tell us we can have freedom. It states, "And you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free." Truth is freedom, and lies, lies are tyranny. We choose freedom. Break the bonds of tyranny. Break the spell of deception that has overcome us. Open our eyes and give us discernment. Let us not be deceived by those that want to keep us in bondage. You rule without exception, and you rule in truth. Give us your truth. We choose life for our city and our nation. In your precious and holy name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys, and have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kira Alexander. Kira Alexander? The next speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. Believe it or not, folks, I'm going to yield my time this evening. Save it all for next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker. Okay, so that brings us to City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. First, I'd like to thank all of our public speakers tonight. I assure all speakers and our participating audience that we do listen to each speaker and follow up with any speakers that have asked for follow-up. I can clarify with respect to one item raised tonight that we do have a scheduled session with city council, an executive session on September ninth regarding the Rocky Flats Greenway Trail, Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail, I should say. And then on September twenty-third, if needed, we would have a public session, discussion on that topic. If I could have the next slide, please? Building on tonight's celebration of our employees, I want to announce that next week, September second to the sixth, is Westminster's Annual Employee Appreciation Week. And this is a celebration ingrained in Westminster's culture, and that supports our workforce and our organization's spirit values, which is an acronym standing for service, people, integrity, respect, innovation, and teamwork. We had two hundred and thirty-nine Teams in Action Awards since two thousand awarded to our teams that work together and exemplify those city spirit values. We've also had one hundred and four Customer Service Champion Awards issued since two thousand, and two hundred and ten Spirit Champions have been recognized since the inception of the award in two thousand and eight. We have six length-of-service awards ceremonies every year, one of which we held tonight, and thank you to Mayor and council for celebrating those long service employees. And I do want to announce, and city council is welcome to attend, our thirty-third annual employee, sorry, our thirty-third annual employee breakfast has already happened, and that was done by our department directors, and we cooked and served breakfast to probably three hundred and fifty city employees that morning. And then I do want to note, Employee Appreciation Week culminates with an employee barbecue on Thursday, September fifth, and I would like to warmly extend the welcome to Mayor and council to attend that, if you would like to share that time with us. Next slide, please. This is a public service announcement for any of our residents who live in homes built nineteen sixty-one or earlier. So Westminster does not have lead in its municipally-supplied water, no trace, but homes built nineteen sixty-one and earlier, we are recommending that you have your household piping inspected. The city has retained a contractor, AGL Construction, to come out and inspect those for you for free. for you for free, and so you can get the information from our website. You can call AGL directly to arrange a free inspection of your pipes in your own home, and that's 720-260-2164. We do encourage you to call sooner rather than later if you do have one of those homes built on or earlier than 1961, because our deadline for responding to the EPA on our inventorying of your homes is October 16th of this year. You can get more information from our website, or you can call that number directly. Next slide, please. Things to know, and this is coming up in the next week or so, Planning Commission tomorrow, August 27th, has been canceled. The Environmental Advisory Board meeting on Wednesday, August 28th, going ahead at 6:30 right here at City Hall. The Uplands Quarterly Construction Update is occurring Thursday, August 29th, and that starts at 5:30 at the Crown Point Academy. And thank you to our community for allowing us to have that meeting rescheduled because of a conflict. Please note that on Labor Day, Monday, September 2nd, city administrative offices will be closed. Do want to note for the public that all of the city services will still be provided, emergency personnel will be on staff, so things will still run well. You just won't have access to us at the administrative offices. Special Permits and License Board meeting Wednesday, September 4th, is occurring, and that starts at 7:00 p.m. here in City Council chambers. And our next meeting of City Council is not on Monday, that's Labor Day. It's the following Monday, September 9th, at 6:30 here in this room. Next slide, please. Coming not next week, but the next council meeting, which is September 9th, I want to highlight that there are three public hearings for the Uplands Development, dealing with three different parcels: one at the southwest corner of West 88th Avenue and Irving Street, one at the southwest corner of West 88th and Decatur Street, and one at the northeast intersection of West 86th and Federal Boulevard. So if you're interested in those projects and wish to speak, there will be public hearings that night on the 9th regarding those topics. And also, depending on the vote of the employees governed by the FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police Union, if that's a successful vote on a draft collective bargaining agreement, we will bring that to City Council for your consideration also on the night of Monday, September 9th. Next slide, please. Tonight, one information-only item I want to draw to your attention, and that's the release of the Proposed 2025 Budget. That's in draft form, and I will have a few slides in a moment to walk through at a high level what that contains. I want to highlight that the 2025 Budget, this is a starting point for City Council. This is our best effort to listen to what you've said and the priorities that you've addressed, and also what our community has raised. It is the starting point for your review, and I'll close tonight with a review for you and for the public as to how that input will continue over the next two months. We believe that the 2025 Budget delivers on the city's strategic plan that has been adopted by City Council. It does address funding needs for the city's core services, including streets maintenance and public safety. It continues the city's investment in the maintenance of our infrastructure. It increases resources that we will put towards mental health and community wellness using opioid settlement funding that the city is now receiving. It permanently funds the police department's victim services advocates. It invests in the maintenance of the city's open space. It enhances cybersecurity for city assets and invests in employees through competitive benefits, salaries, and training. Next slide, please. The Proposed Budget addresses emerging needs and City Council priorities, as I've mentioned, while holding the line on existing staffing levels across the city. I'm proposing for you just over half of 1% increase in permanent staffing levels across the entire city workforce, and we're offsetting that through the elimination of a senior executive position in the City Manager's Office and the repurposing of vacant positions. As mentioned by one of our public speakers, our commitment, my commitment, is that this budget is intended to advance the city's commitment to justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging for all members of the Westminster community. Next slide, please. A high-level overview of what the budget contains: The total budget across all funds is $449 million for 2025. That is up $52 million, or 13% from 2024, and that is mostly due to capital needs coming next year. Of the total budget allocations, the personnel allocation is the single largest portion of the budget at 37%, followed, as I mentioned, by capital, which takes 29% of the budget next year. I would also note, though, this is a balanced budget as proposed, because our revenues for the city are also up and matching those levels. And I would also highlight for our general public, there are no increases in sales tax or property tax associated with this budget. Next slide, please. In terms of next steps, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier, moving from this point forward, City Council has now received this draft budget, as has our public, on September 5th, so almost two weeks from today. City Council questions are welcome at any point from now forward, up to and including the 5th, so you get those to us. We will then have a public hearing on September 9th, including feedback from our community. And then on September 10th, staff will put together all those responses and get those back to you for the questions that you've asked or the input that you've given. And then on September 16th, will be a public budget review study session. And then on September 23rd, the Proposed Budget Amendments will come back to City Council and be addressed by you. And then on October 14th, that all having been done and the budget reworked per your direction, we will have first reading for you on October 14th, followed by second reading and adoption of the final city budget on October 28th. Next slide, please. I have one more topic tonight, and this is of a pressing nature, so I'm going to ask our Chief of Staff, Assistant City Manager, Chris Lindsay, to come to the podium and provide us with a brief update from the special legislative session occurring right now. So go ahead, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Andrews. Good evening, Council. I think many of you are aware, but the Governor has called a special legislative session that commenced today. The session is set to amend SB 24-233, the property tax legislation that was passed. The Governor has asked for this to happen in exchange for a withdrawal of Initiative 50 and Proposition 108, which would limit the impact of property tax increases. These are likely to be on the ballot this November and could have a negative financial impact on governments and school districts, hence the desire for a compromise to remove those from the November ballot. Initiative 50 and Proposition 108 would lower the assessment rate significantly more than SB 24-233 and would create revenue caps. As a home rural municipality, Westminster would be exempt from the new revenue limit. However, the city would be negatively impacted by the assessed valuation reductions. In addition to the city's finances, what staff believes are the most significant impact for Westminster would be a reduction in revenue for our tax increment financing areas, which include several of the city's urban renewal areas, including Westminster City Center or the downtown URA. The proposed legislation introduced today, House Bill 24B-1001, would be a compromise with lower assessment rates from SB 24-233, but would not be as significant as those that are in Initiatives 50 and Proposition 108. Staff is tracking this special session and coordinating with the city's lobbyist, Amy Atwood, and our partners across the municipal space, especially the Colorado Municipal League. City staff has shared feedback from staff and bond counsel to Ms. Atwood and the proponents of the legislation, looking to lessen the impact to especially those urban renewal areas. And Ms. Atwood is working with legislators to find amendments that would be amenable to legislators in those areas. Ms. Atwood anticipates that the special legislative session will move quickly, perhaps only lasting three days, which is the time it takes to pass a single bill in the state legislature. 2024 lobbying protocols allow for council to consider legislation and a potential position on legislation by any email poll. If staff believes this is needed, staff will follow that protocol in the coming days to return with any recommended positions. If there are no questions, we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
So I'm assuming then the URA has already bonded against the projected proceeds, that now that would be significantly impacted?
That's correct.
Okay. Because that's pretty much what these are used for. All right. And does Ms. Atwood believe that there are some potential amendments that would be amenable? Is there something out there that's?
We're working on those amendments. Whether or not they're amenable to the sponsors, I don't know that I can speak to at this moment, but we are working on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland or Counselor Azadi? Any questions?
No, I'm good.
I don't see anyone else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you. I just have one more slide, and that is how people can get ahold of me in the City Manager's Office. You can reach me directly by phone, 303-658-2003, or at my email address, jandrews@westminsterco.gov. Sorry. And we do have four different platforms on social media to also reach out to us, any one of those that are convenient. I would also like to note and thank the first speaker in particular for his patience while we worked through the AV. We did have a new microphone installed on the podium to be less directionally sensitive, and that was installed for this evening, and I think once it was reconnected after some moving around, it is working better. So I just want to say that we are working on our AV in this chamber, and hopefully, moving forward, it'll be more reliable and easier for our people outside to hear what's happening from our speakers. So thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight.
Thank you. That brings us to City Council comments. I'll go to Counselor Ireland online.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out and speaking. I appreciate all the voices from our citizens. And I, too, was concerned about the three-minute time limit. It seems like it's kind of short, but that's what the other city councillors wanted, but I like to listen to you. But thank you for coming out and talking. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Yes. I want to also thank everyone who came out to speak. First, I want to address the first speaker. I probably could have been a little bit more clear on how I explained what I was trying to express, because the point of my comment was that I could vote to not overturn the state, the sensitive spaces law, and still be protecting the Constitution, because that's something that I swore to uphold. So it is true that when the Second Amendment was written, we did not have a national military. And there's a reason why every time we talk about the Second Amendment, we never talk about the part about a well-regulated militia, because a well-regulated militia is no longer needed. So it is true that the Supreme Court said that average citizens could bear arms. And it is true that they gave rights to the states, saying that states could make some decisions. And one of the decisions that they said that states could make was particularly with sensitive spaces. And you can actually read that in Scalia's response. He particularly mentions sensitive spaces. So my point was that that part of the Second Amendment is null and void. But it doesn't mean that we don't still have the Second Amendment. But what we do have is the right for states to individually decide some of the laws they want to have around gun ownership. So the reason why I was explaining that is because I had people writing me, saying that if I did not vote for overturning the sensitive spaces law, that I was not respecting the Constitution. And so my point was that because states do have the right to make laws, I can still vote no on the sensitive spaces bill and feel confident that I am protecting the Constitution. So that's what I'd like to clarify on that. And then I also would like to just follow up with the letter that I had brought to council and to staff, and see if staff had time to review the letter, when we might be able to discuss it again. And then also, I would really like to see a study session around this. I really liked the study session that we had around the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail and how we had experts from both sides. And so I'd really like to see some hydrologists, geophysicists, would really like to see the aquifer maps. And I think that if we have a study session, it would be good to invite Thornton and North Glenn to see or watch or let them know that we're having this study session, since they also use the water from Stanley Lake. So those were some questions that I had for staff.
Thank you, Counselor. I can follow up, I'll follow up after this meeting. I'll consult with staff and get a response for you and share that with all of City Council regarding the draft letter and also what you've suggested regarding a study session. If there is, I would say on that point, if there's interest from City Council, maybe if you could all express that to me this evening, and then we can work on that and get that set up.
Counselor Demott?
Just to respond, one of the things I was going to ask for is you had, in reference to some of the concerns the community keep making about runoff, you had provided some pretty good information that that runoff doesn't actually go to the lake. It'd have to go uphill, and so the water that runs off from the airport doesn't go there. So I would like that to be published somewhere along with the RMMA stuff that we have on the site. I would like to hear staff's response to the idea of the letter, and quite frankly, what we think that we might be able to accomplish from that kind of study session, before I would be able to give that I would want that.
Mayor Protem?
I, too, am interested in understanding staff's perspective on the content of the letter. I think last time when we were talking about it, we were discussing, is there a potential to add some additional elements to it, not just having it focus on the water and drainage, but to also potentially address some of the business activity if there is some increased flight, school activity, for example. So just making sure that if we are going to send a letter, that it's inclusive of the concerns we have as a whole. So I think obviously another conversation would be helpful. I do believe we were hoping to hear, or at least some of us were hoping to hear, from the airport and invite them to a study session or conversation with us. I personally would like to have verified for me the addition of, you know, hearing that there's a new flight school in activation right now. You can, you know, I can hear it from the public that it's, the activity may be increased, and so the passion from the community input right now is high, because if that's what they're hearing, then I'd like to better understand and have that confirmed. So again, I'm a proponent of having the airport come in, having some of this information verified, having staff give us an overview of what would be appropriate regarding the drainage and the water concerns, but then potentially adding to it.
Counselor Carmelio?
Yes, my sentiments remain the same as the last time we spoke on the issue, but I felt it might be helpful to reiterate those who are listening this evening, which is the same as what Counselors Demott and Mayor Protem just echoed. I would like city staff to review and make sure that everything is accurate, and I also want to make sure that we supplement, if we are going to send a letter, that we supplement with all of the asks that we may have. And in regards to the study session itself, I believe that we should prioritize And in regards to study session itself, I believe that we should prioritize having the director of the airport here and hear from them first. I think that should be our priority, is to collect our information and get to meet and establish a relationship with the new director and with those working at the airport. I think that should be our priority.
Counselor Azadi? Counselor Ireland?
Hi, I too think we need to hear from the airport director. I've reached out to him myself and never heard back from him. I'm hoping that the city staff can get him to come and talk to us about what is really going on in his eyes. But I also like to hear the other side from the citizens that are affected by it. I like them there too, just like the plutonium session, I thought was very protective. And I'd like to hear both sides at a special session.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear.
So I was just saying, city manager, I have a question. I thought we had passed this last time with the, these were the same asked last time. Can you refresh my memory? Did it not pass the last time?
I'm sorry, Counselor. I don't think there was a motion or such. I think we, there was a discussion through, at the city council comment period, I do believe. And then a draft letter circulated, I also believe, from Counselor Hott. I think that, is that where we left it the last meeting?
Sorry, I had just thought that when Counselor Hott brought it up last time, everyone had the same comments that we have right now and asked for staff input. But maybe that didn't pass or something. But I'm in favor of what Counselor Hott is asking for in general. And I would like to see, I would like to meet the new airport director, similar to Counselor Ireland. So a study session makes sense at the minimum. I know he has some new, it's new leadership, and he has some new direction there. So we should meet them and continue to build that relationship. So a study session makes sense.
For me, for me, it's start with our staff that works with all of these different partnerships. See what you all have to say, and we then go from there.
Mayor, thank you. Counselor Hott, thank you, Counselor, for all of your comments. I'll regroup with staff tomorrow, our subject matter experts, and get a response back to city council at a starting point. I have also already been speaking with airport leadership, and will be having a one-on-one meeting myself, and that was part of my preparation for this discussion. Didn't get there before tonight, so apologies. I did want to bring back that. I will relate to him directly, that city council would like to have him come in and meet with us, meet with you, and we'll endeavor to get a study session set up for that post-haste, depending on his availability for that session. And in the meantime, we'll pull some more information, certainly releasing publicly to you what was already provided, with some early feedback on the drainage patterns around the lake, and then some more feedback and perhaps a revised draft suggestion for Counselor Hott's draft letter, if that would be helpful.
Thank you. Counselor Hott?
Yes, so, thank you. So I just want to just reiterate that the reason I keep bringing this up is because residents, this is an issue that residents bring up every single week through, we get a lot of emails about it. We have a lot of public testimony about it. And so I think that our goal is to relieve, either find out that we have contaminants and fix it, or relieve our residents, you know, knowing that our water source is safe. And so I understand that the runoff, that is being contained with Walnut Creek. I do think it's important to see what the groundwater looks like, what the aquifers look like, and how far away the aquifers are from the lake. Because where you can see runoff, you can't see the groundwater. And so either we're going to find that there is something that we need to worry about, or we're going to find that there's nothing that we need to worry about. But we need to make sure that we have that for our residents, or else they are not going to, we need to listen to their concerns. And either way, either have enough evidence to show our residents that our water is fine, or find out that maybe there's something we need to look at. So again, I just think it's really important that we are listening to our residents for these concerns. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for speaking. And thank you especially to those who continue to bring up our public health and environmental concerns, whether it's around Rocky Flats or around RMMA. It's very important, so thank you. There was a comment that a flight school was added. This is news to me. And so I will follow up on that to find out, or is that something that we can follow up on, city manager?
Counselor, thank you. Yes, I have, again, reached out to the airport leadership. So these will be some of the topics that I had hoped to cover with them before tonight. Was not able to make that connection before this evening. So I will work to get that information for you.
Understood. But I would like to ensure that we clarify and follow up on that for the city, because it is our understanding right now, I believe, that that would not happen. And I also wanted to ask around construction for the bridge. When is that supposed to begin? I thought it was supposed to begin in September. And I think we've answered this before. I apologize. But for the bridge on Indiana with the Greenway Trail, when is that due to begin construction?
Counselor, thank you for the question. Yeah, I think there has been some confusion in the dates around construction related to the total project. I understand it's the Boulder work that's beginning in September. The Indiana crossing adjacent to Westminster is not scheduled to begin until January of next year.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. That means that we have time to hold our study sessions and have these discussions, which I think will help put all of us in the public at ease. I just want to say that our water quality is a vital concern to me. And I think I can speak for everyone in the city and all of us up here when I say that we will, we are working to protect our municipal water the best we can. So we want to work with you there. That is a priority especially for me. So these are items that I'm going to continue to follow up on. I think we are all doing the best we can. We'll hold that study session for the Greenway Trail. And I think we'll have some more answers coming up soon. So thank you for coming. Keep pressuring us on it.
Okay, that brings us to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution, let's see? We've been asked to remove 8A, so do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 22? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda item 8B.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to pass item 8B. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to the item that was taken off of the consent agenda, item 8A. Move to adopt Resolution 22, referring a ballot question. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 22, referring a ballot question to the registered voters of Westminster at the November 5, 2024 coordinated election for a five-tenth of 1% increase in the city's sales and use rate to enhance the safety and security of Westminster residents and businesses.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 22. Counselor Ireland?
I, I'm against this resolution. I don't believe the sales tax is too high. Our cost of living in Westminster and for our businesses is getting too expensive. The interest rate and the debt was higher for this particular choice also. So I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Counselor Azadi, do you have anything to say? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not typically a big government tax guy, but I think one of the most true forms of our democracy is when people get to vote whether or not they want to tax themselves. And the sales tax, really, let alone the fact that they get to vote whether or not they're going to approve this, they also get to vote every time they go and shop. They don't necessarily have to shop in the city of Westminster. I think that as much as I empathize with folks, I go to the grocery store just like the rest of you, and it hurts more every time I go there. I have a family at home, and things are getting expensive. But that's no different for the folks that do the job of firefighter in the city of Westminster. And I think that we do owe it to them, an opportunity for the voters to say whether or not they want these new facilities, whether or not they want additional firefighters. And ultimately, this choice goes to them, and it's going to be up to them whether or not this is something they want to support. I certainly support our first responders, and I think it's important for folks to decide whether or not that's how we should prioritize our money. I do want to reference, we got an email, all of council, from former city manager, Bill Christopher, talking about the needs of roads and why we didn't pair that in. That conversation, I think, is too close to when we have to approve this, if it's going to be on the ballot. I think it's a fair question. I will say that there are certainly other needs that the city has. And so I hope that we at least continue to look, as we have over the last three to four years, how we're going to continue to improve roads. That's something that we can take from our general fund, make sure we're prioritizing. But I wanted to at least make mention of it, because I know all of council was asked that question, and I do think it's a fair question. But again, I support putting this on the ballot so that the residents can decide whether or not this is something that they want to support.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiments that were just stated, so thank you. As Counselor Demott just stated, this is going to the voters, so they will be deciding for themselves what they would like to do here. And I would like to emphasize that this is to support our city's most vital infrastructure, perhaps our most vital infrastructure in the city. And that is because, you know, while every city needs its municipal resources and every city needs a fire department, for our city here in Colorado on the front range, you know, wildfire is not an if, it's a when. And having the proper response time within the city, you know, having a four-minute transportation time to residents in our city, I think that's something mandatory that we need to provide for residents. So this is something that is much needed. I do want to echo the sentiments as well that were just stated, you know. If in the future, you know, more municipal efforts are needed of us, and we need to figure out where to combine our facilities and utilities needs, I think that we should take a broader look at how to do that in the future. But the thing is, is this is urgent now, and so I think that our voters need to decide right now. And concerning the survey that went out already, it sounds like our residents have agreed that this is a need, that they see us already needing right near today. So those are my thoughts around that.
Counselor Hott?
Yes, I also just want to echo how important it is. There are areas in the city that don't have the coverage that we need. And for anybody who's experiencing an emergency, knows every second and every minute count. And I have had the opportunity to see a couple of our fire stations that need some remodeling, and it, we have some, they're built in such a way that it's like a tri-level, and it's not really conducive for when there's an emergency. Also, I want to point out that fires, it's getting hotter, it's getting drier, and we're experiencing more fires. And we used to have fire season. But what I'm understanding now is we don't have fire season anymore. Fire season is all year round. And I think that the Marshall Fire really showed us that fires could happen at any time of the year, because that was at the end of December. So I do think this is very important. I'm glad that it will be going to the voters, and I really hope that it passes, so that way our fire department can have the stations that they need, stations that are functional, and we can really provide better for the residents in Westminster. And we really do have one of the best fire departments, not just in the state, but in the nation. And so I am looking forward to voting yes tonight.
Mayor Protem?
I don't want to repeat a lot of the sentiments, so I will say that I too have been convinced that we do need this funding for our fire department. And I hope that residents will utilize the information that we'll be, we'll hopefully have on the website, that will give them the information about the coverage gaps that we have, the opportunities to upgrade really old facilities that have some code issues for building and that are limited in terms of their expansion. So in terms of the services that we continue to need to have. And that's only going to increase as our population ages. And we can see the evidence already in the past few years of our call volumes increasing. And this is not a trend that we see moving downward. So I hope that we will equip our team to do what we all want them to do, which is provide us with quality service. So that's why I'll be voting in favor of this.
To keep us moving, I just ditto everything that's been said. It is up to the voters. They're the ones that are going to have to pay. I know from the business perspective, going up to over 9% is a scary thing. Also, with Adams County looking at raising minimum wage and doing that to our businesses, they're a little concerned. But I think everybody understands our first responders, both police and fire, come first. They are our core. And so it is right for the citizens to vote. With that, roll call, please. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott? Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to second reading of Counselors' Bill Number 26, adopting ballot language to amend the Westminster Charter regarding election of city councillors by geographic wards. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 26 on second reading, adopting ballot language to amend the Westminster Charter regarding the election of city councillors by geographic wards.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 26. Any comments? Counselor Demott?
Just real briefly, I want to say that this is the work of a lot of different residents and council people over many, many years. And I'm glad that we get to put this to bed this election cycle, and the people get to decide whether or not they do want geographic wards in the city of Westminster.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. Yes, this is exciting. It's the culmination of a lot of the work of residents, as was just stated, on our citizens advisory team and as well as years of thought process around this. So it's very exciting. I just wanted to ask of our city manager. Recently, we've done an excellent job, and thank you, of posting online the many issues. I think there's five different issues that are important right now to residents, and adding that information on the website. And I think we've done a really good job of that. Could we also add anything that is being up for a ballot measure so that residents have somewhere to go to, and they can immediately see all the information there? And I wanted to add that for the fire department bill, as well as this one, just so that residents get all the information they need somewhere online, and there's a page for it.
Counselor, thank you for the question. Yes, we certainly will do that, put public information up following council's actions on these two items tonight.
Great idea. And I'm thinking that maybe that page just has all, anything that would be a ballot measure. And I know that there's a blue book provided eventually, but I think that it's the least we can do to help our residents out. but I think that it's the least we can do to help our residents out.
Mayor Protem?
I just want to, again, thank my colleagues for trying to find a way to move this forward. And I also want to thank the residents who participated in the process. I will vote yes for this, but I, as hopefully the record is clear, I would like to have a hybrid council where we do have some at-large counselors. And so I am trusting that my colleagues will help move forward an additional ballot item for the next election, that we would potentially add two more counselors for that. I understand we're separating it out, but I'm not overly excited with this particular one. So, thanks.
For me, it is, when we have candidates sitting here, and we help them with what is our job and what do we do, I often say, you come to times where what you would do personally, you have to set aside, because you're representing a city, not just yourself. This is one of those times. I have to let go and say, "Community, you have to decide, because I would not probably vote for this," for many reasons. But it is up to the community what they want. So this is one of those times. How I would vote is much different than how I'm going to vote tonight to allow citizens to be able to make those choices.
Counselor Ireland?
I'm in favor of this, and I appreciate all those that got on board to make this happen and get it on the ballot, so the citizens can decide if this is the way they want their city ran in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Azadi?
I'm in favor of this, let's get this done.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Do we need to discuss executive session here? Or since we made the motion in the last executive session, are we good to go?
Mayor, I would suggest that council could, right now, take up the question of these next two exec sessions, which are scheduled to occur at the end of your agenda after the post-meeting presentations conclude. And the two executive sessions that are on tonight's agenda, in my understanding, is the first that would be convened would be the executive session pursuant to Section 111.3, Print 2 of the Westminster Municipal Code and 2464024A of Colorado Revised Statute regarding the potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest, as well as Section 111.3.8 of the Westminster Municipal Code and 2464024B of the state statute, receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, and Section 111.3 Westminster Municipal Code and Section 2464024E1 of Colorado Revised Statutes, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, all relating to municipal ownership of the Stanley Lake Division of the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company, shares, properties, and infrastructure, and the continued ownership, operation, and governance thereof. So that'd be the exec session. I would ask council to vote as to whether or not you want to convene toward the end of your meeting. And if you could take that up now, I'll tell you what the second title is after that vote.
Are we willing to, after we close this meeting and have two presentations, have a first executive session? And if you're so moved, give your name and say yes.
Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Amber Hott, yes. Counselor Azadi?
Obi Azadi, yes.
Counselor Ireland?
I won't be participating. I'm not at a place where I can have private conversations, so I will be doing this this evening. Thank you, though.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. And then the final executive session of the evening that's on tonight's agenda would be for a discussion of a personnel matter, review of applications, and discussion of next steps in the city manager recruitment pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section 111.3.C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
So, again, just state your name, and if you're willing to go into executive session for our personnel issue.
Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Amber Hott, yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Obi Azadi, yes.
And Counselor Ireland, are you in or out of this one?
I'm out of all of them. Thank you, though.
Okay.
And I'll see you next week. All right.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Those are the two executive sessions that are on your agenda.
This meeting is adjourned, it's 8:43.
Hey, we're in post-meeting. City manager?
Mayor, I'll turn it straight over to Mr. Eric Otzelberger, who will lead us through both of these presentations this evening. And I believe, in the interest of your time, he will make the presentation first, and then open it up after that presentation for questions and answers.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council, manager Andrews, deputy city manager Larry Dorr. It's deja vu all over again, occupancy standards. I will move through this quickly, because this council did talk about this subject in pretty significant detail at a study session back in February. However, since then, with House Bill 1007, state law changed. The ordinance we were working on didn't exactly jive with that. So we're here this evening in partnership with city attorney's office with a draft ordinance for your direction. So with policy considerations, just a reminder, you know, we, the city council did examine this issue, provided direction to staff. The city council did pass ordinance back in April. Then House Bill 1007 was signed into law just almost a week after that, and with an effective date of July 1st. And the ordinance we were working on, as you may recall, we were transitioning from formal to functional family. But the state law says you can't govern on family, period, or regulate on family, period. So as far as that second bullet point, demonstrated health and safety standards, we do have those. And that's what we talked about back in February, with international residential code, IRC, habitable floor space. You know, this is really aimed at mitigating overcrowding and potential issues, you know, health issues and welfare issues that could come from that. It's a two-factor test. You see 150 and 100 square feet for general living area, 70 and 30 for per bedroom for occupancy. And once again, this is an IRC, International Residential Code standard. The amendments in the draft ordinance in the packet, and the draft ordinance was there when we spoke back in February, we were really aimed at occupancy standards with partnership with our deputy city attorney, Greg Graham. We have a few more deletions of family. It's not very prevalent in the code. There's some things with mobile home, with dwelling unit. It doesn't change the types of dwelling units, but just that nomenclature with family. With the draft ordinance before you, it maintains some of the items that you provided with direction back in February, deleting the up to four unrelated persons, because that smacks of family, and we can't be regulating based on that. And then just some intelligent housekeeping changes, for clarity. So pretty straightforward, very similar to the ordinance you provided direction on before. With the main change is cutting out that functional family. There's no family, period. And just a reminder, in addition to, you know, those objective square footage requirements, other zoning controls persist in the code, limitations on boarding and rooming houses, you know, not having commercial activities in residential districts, dwelling units per acre, maximum square footage of principal buildings, setbacks, lot areas, things of that nature. So the basic question before you this evening is, should the city proceed with the draft ordinance in your packet to amend the respective sections of the municipal code related to occupancy standards? And with that, I'll open it up for questions and direction.
I'll just go down the line. Counselor Hott?
I just think it makes sense to make those housekeeping changes, so yeah.
Counselor Carmelia?
I agree, it does as well. I just wonder, do you have the full draft language, as you would like it to be written, somewhere that we could look at?
Yeah, the version in the packet, Counselor, is, it's in partnership with the attorney's office. That's what we would present for council. That's what we would present for council action at a regular city council meeting.
Counselor Azadi? Counselor Damat?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I said yes if you didn't hear that.
We can hear you. Are you for the ADU as it's written?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Damat?
Sounds good.
Mayor Protem?
I just had one question. Is the, does this, did any of the changes at all impact the way we regulate or would regulate the short-term rentals?
No, and good question, Mayor Protem. When the City Council went through the short-term rental regulations and licensing process, we do have a code section that points back to the existing IRC. We just wanted to make sure we were synced up there, so we're in good shape with that.
Okay, okay, well then, yes.
Next?
And I'll, there's the man. We did rock, paper, scissors. John gets to present an ADUs.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Hard act to follow. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilors. John McConnell, Planning Manager here tonight to provide you with an overview of our recommendation for an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or ADU for short. As you know, a revision to the Westminster Municipal Code is required to allow ADUs. City Council has instructed staff to draft such an ordinance amendment, and we've worked to get that draft together. And we want to give you an overview of that today. You may be also, or you may also recall the recent, the recently enacted House Bill 1152, which was a state act that overrides local zoning codes and HOA covenant restrictions. And this is set to take effect in June of 2025. There's a bit of uncertainty that this will take effect as planned. This is due to potential legal challenges. It may come from a different jurisdiction that may have not have been as supportive of ADUs like this one was, or it may be from HOAs that are opposed to it. We're just not sure yet. There's also potential for additional legislation on ADUs in 2025. And I bring these to your attention because our recommendation is to do a Westminster-specific ADU ordinance. It will mostly align with the state regulations, but retain a few or a couple of items that we think that would be of value to the citizens. And I'll go over that as I complete the presentation. So why are ADUs so critical to our community? So many experts believe this is a best practice planning tool to, and a key strategy for addressing attainability in housing. ADUs are also identified in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Housing Needs Assessment as critical to our housing stock. And it supports diverse housing options, which is consistent with your strategic priority number one, which is access to opportunity. There are three basic types of ADUs that you commonly see. You have detached, attached, or interior. And the illustrations on your screen here, if you start with the top left, that's what a detached ADU would generally be configured like. So the greenhouse would be your primary structure, your existing structure. The red would be a full dwelling unit that is smaller and subordinate in extent to the primary structure. And so that could be a stick-built structure, a new home in the backyard. It could be a tiny home. There's been a lot of discussion about tiny homes, a lot of interest in the council in tiny homes. And so a tiny home could be a detached ADU. You also have attached ADUs. And there are a couple of illustrations here that show horizontal addition onto an existing house or an upper-floor addition above a garage or otherwise second floor. You also have several types of interior ADUs. These could be basement finishes with existing basements, an interior of a garage that was converted to an ADU, or just a conversion of the upper level of an interior of a house to an ADU. So staff's recommendation is proposing to allow all of these types to give flexibility to our citizens as to how they would like to incorporate a second dwelling unit into their property. So the work that we've done to date, we first introduced this concept back in the June 17th, 2017 study session, when we gave you an update on the state legislation and we talked about bringing forward an ADU ordinance. We've worked to complete the draft and we're preparing it for your review. We want to do this last touch base with you to make sure we were tracking right with your intentions. And if everything looks good to you based on this presentation, we'll bring this to you for your consideration at an upcoming public hearing. The staff recommendation and the limitations that are imposed on the House bill are going to be outlined in the next few slides that I'll show you. I'll give you a side-by-side comparison of the two. As I said earlier, staff's recommendation will largely align with the state act. The left column shows you the fundamental provisions of an ADU ordinance. It's pretty straightforward, it's simple zoning. The right two columns, the first one in the middle would be the staff recommendation and what the, and how it compares to the state act. So the first provision is that the staff would be recommending that just like all other accessory use, or accessory buildings, that they should be the same, same character as the surrounding neighborhood. They should generally match the architecture of the house and fall in line with what the HOA covenants usually expect. And this is how we regulate all types of accessory buildings. We want to make sure that they really work well with the house and the neighborhood and preserve that character. The state act prohibits the city from requiring anything that's subjective. So if we have to make a judge on architectural character, that's something the state act doesn't allow us to do. And so staff really feels like this would be important to the city in the event that the state act doesn't actually take effect next year. Our recommendation is in alignment with the state act, which allows one per lot, also with lot coverage. So we're proposing that the total square footage of the principal dwelling unit and the ADU combined not exceed the requirement for the principal dwelling in the zone district. And so this would be treating an ADU just like an addition to a house. So the rules would be the same. You'd be limited to the maximum lot coverage ratio that you would if you were adding bedrooms onto your house. Minimum building setbacks, the staff would recommend all being the same as the principal dwelling. You know, building off of that same equity, somebody building an addition onto their house would have the same setbacks as somebody building an addition or a detached ADU. The state would force the city to provide a rear setback that would be equal to what we would require for an accessory building, like a tool shed, which would be five feet generally. Maximum building height, same as the principal dwelling. This is, same as the state. The staff is actually proposing a lot more flexibility in the size, the minimum and maximum sizes. The state only requires that the city require between 500 and 750 square feet, which is pretty, pretty narrow. Staff's recommending a minimum of 190 and a maximum of up to 1,200 square feet, or 50% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. And so you would have to have essentially a 2,400-square-foot house to max out on that 1,200-square-foot limit. Otherwise, it'd be 50% of your existing house. And this is designed to ensure that accessory dwelling units are always accessory and subordinate and smaller. And also, the minimum and maximum comes from the 2024 IRC's minimum and maximum for their appendix for accessory dwelling units. And staff's recommending requiring one minimum parking space. This departs from the state regulation that doesn't allow us to require any additional parking unless two, one of two scenarios exist. The state says that we can only require up to one extra space if there's no existing driveway on the house or if there's no off-street parking. So again, the staff would recommend if you're adding a dwelling unit, you add at least one parking space to it. The staff's recommendation is also consistent with the state. I know you see a red X here, which may be a little confusing, but the staff's not recommending that owner occupancy is required. We don't, the city doesn't require that in any other type of dwelling unit, including short-term rentals. And in fact, the state act actually prohibits the city from doing that. So our recommendation is in alignment with the state on that. And we both agree that this should be an administrative approval. It shouldn't require public hearings or any lengthy ODP amendments or anything like that. You should be able to come in, meet the, meet the requirements and get a permit. So our recommended strategy is to wrap up the ordinance draft that we're, we've nearing completion on. This would allow the City Council to immediately begin allowing and permitting ADUs in a way that, you know, protects some of the, some of the items that you may feel is important, as I illustrated. And if HB 24152 has a legal challenge from HOAs, the city, the city will still have a process that you've already adopted. We've been implementing it since adoption and nothing changes. If HB 24152 remains unchanged and it's implemented as, as planned, then we can always return to you for a very quick amendment to align ourselves with those three key provisions if you choose to adopt the staff recommendation. So as far as next steps go, again, we'll return to you with the ordinance for consideration. If you choose to adopt it, we'll implement the ordinance. We'll note the successes and challenges that we have, as we do with any new ordinance. We'll continue to monitor the state legislature for any changes that they may have. And we'll monitor any legal challenges that may arise in the meantime. And of course, we can always revise the ordinance if, if needed. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Counselor Hutt?
I'm on board.
Counselor Chamillion?
Let it cost a couple of questions. Slide five, the very first note you had, maintain architectural character. I'm assuming obviously that that only stands if it's, you know, external. How do we regulate that?
Well, it's a, it's a subjective judgment call. We have professional staff that are trained in architectural styles. And as with any type of residential development, we make sure that the houses that are built comply with any rules, architectural rules that are in their development plans. And where those rules are somewhat silent, we, we have provisions that say you must maintain architectural character. And so we have to make a judgment call. Is it the same general architectural style, same, similar roof pitches and articulation on it? We don't anticipate there to be a lot of articulation in a, in an addition for an ADU or a freestanding ADU. But we do feel like it would be important to make sure that, that anything that's built really respects the character of the neighborhood unless and until the state tells us we can't do, can't do that.
I understand that need, and I guess I'm willing to take feedback from other counselors here, but that does seem to me to be somewhat prohibitive if, if an owner has to design. I don't know what it takes to build an ADU, but I'm assuming that a lot of them are kind of out of the box, you know, that you can set up. And so I'm just hoping that we're not putting undue prohibition, you know, prohibitive measures on residents around this, but willing to take invoke, yeah.
Specifically around that, because I mean, we want it to be, I think, fast and easy. But at the same time, you know, what is acceptable to who might be making that subjective call versus somebody else might be different. And so like I know in our current, say for example, if you're trying to build something that, you know, you want an exception for, they can go to the Planning Commission. And then I think they can even appeal to City Council. Planning Commission shoots them down. So what's the appeal process? So if you administratively say nope, do the residents have the opportunity to come to either City Council or the Planning Commission to see if, you know, it is still fair and balanced?
This would, this wouldn't involve an ODP or a PDP, so nothing that would elevate to the Planning Commission or City Council unless we built in a specific clause in the code, if y'all are interested in that.
I would be, an example of something, you know, that, that I've seen in, not just kind of like in building, but specifically say the city manager revokes somebody's business license. They have an opportunity to come to special permits and licensing, which is totally different because it's totally outside of council. And if they say yes, the only place you could go is court. I think that that's a fair avenue. I don't know that that would work for this, but in that instance, it makes sense to me. So I would be open to us having something in our process that allows some sort of appeal if, you know, the resident doesn't feel the administrative process was fair.
Okay, I'll just add on to this one point, that caveatting that they could, you know, just what, what are the criteria for that appeal? Because if they just don't like, hey, you have to use the same material as your house and they, you know, I don't know, I just feel like they could circumvent any administrative. I totally agree that an outlet for, for the community to be able to have some other recourse if the administrative process is prohibitive. But I'm also thinking about neighborhoods that might have design standards or guidelines associated with their PUDs and/or just a specific style. So, you know, and I'm just wondering if there's some level of, while there is some subjectivity, there are some, some basic things like the same material or color or roof pitch, as you were talking about. There are some finite elements that you could at least get in there that would not be subjective.
Are you a planner?
So if I understand you correctly, Mayor Protem, would you prefer to see just more objective standards listed that were leaning into the architectural side of things? Maybe like roof pitch materials without being completely subjective? And then would you still be interested in the appeal process if we did build in those objective criteria for the subjective stuff?
My opinion is that keeps us out of, I'm not a lawyer, but I have to imagine, just like any of our other processes, if you had criteria and somebody appealed it and then say they didn't like the peel and they went to court, because that's always an option, people, if they have the means, then just like anything else, it would be nice to have that criteria to say, here's what, you know, we base that, that on. And, you know, the peel failed because whoever that governing body is that handles the peels, it would be much like any other process that we have, a good outline that outlines our process. I think that keeps us out of trouble long-term. And it protects the character of, of neighborhoods in a good defensible way. And in my opinion, not being an attorney, but.
So just a question maybe for Mr. McConnell. So one difference here is that the ADUs may be requested in neighborhoods that are already built that have an HOA. And you're maintaining the architectural character of the surrounding neighborhood requirement here. Does this anticipate HOA approval? Because HOAs likely have a process where they would consider a request. Because HOAs likely have a process where they would consider a request like this. And if the HOA approval isn't provided, I don't know that the city wants to be overriding the HOA decisions in its neighborhood where it controls architectural form and character. So I, I'm curious, have you considered whether HOA approval is, is one of the things that needs to be obtained?
Haven't considered that, but it, it's a, it's a very good point, a very good suggestion, and if the council's interested in making that a requirement. I think until the state legislation's enacted, the HOA still would have control. Probably a lot of them are like my HOA, and they wouldn't allow the, the land use, so that would be a hard stop for me building an A D U. However, if the state legislation does take effect as planned, then the HOAs can't be involved and regulate the architecture anyway. But I guess in the meantime, if we're talking about advancing this, is there appetite for adding the HOA sign-off to the, to the review process?
Because I think you could have measurable criteria where there isn't an HOA. But if there's an HOA, I think you have a challenge where HOA approval probably needs to figure into the approval process.
So if the HOA approves it, maybe it supersedes?
With staff designs? I'm a control freak on staff's side, so, but, you know, I guess one question could be, the HOA communities often are governed by a P U D, which probably has some design guidelines or standards in it. So that could be a factor if you're talking about criteria or, you know, obviously there's some really basic objective ones, like we were talking about for neighborhoods that are just built with a, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of great brick home neighborhoods, and, you know, we'd want to make, potentially maintain some of that, but the, if, if there are some design guidelines in existence that could help guide staff or inform staff in their review of the unit?
Or the resident. I mean, honestly, like, you don't want them just coming up with their grand idea and then being like, ah, sorry, you spent all your time on that, but we don't like it. I mean, I think some guidelines would be helpful.
Definitely a how to.
I think you raise a good point about the existing P U D's. Some of the older ones are somewhat lacking in, in real clear design criteria. Some of the older ones have materials and even sometimes materials that are outdated and maybe not even available anymore. So we do run across that. Some of the newer ones are much more specific in architectural style, and so we would apply all of that in the review like we would any other sort of construction in a residential neighborhood, whether it be a house or a, or a tool shed or whatever.
Well, so I'll finish my last two thoughts, and hopefully we'll figure out some consensus around that piece. So I just wanted to say, the parking piece, I, I disagree with that. I don't think that it should be a requirement. I think it's up to the resident of the A D U. If they have a parking requirement, then they need to work that out with the owner of the main dwelling and, you know, make that arrangement. But if they do not have a parking requirement, especially if it's within the house, right? If there's an A D U within the house, it's in the basement, let's say, somebody's living there, they may not have a car. Why are we requiring that they add a parking space? I think that that's up to them to figure out whether they need parking, and that should not be a prohibitive measure on whether they get to have an A D U, especially if it's a, a house, it's a, a residence. I don't understand how a resident would change their parking facilities anyway. They have the driveway and they're out, out front. I don't know what they would do about that availability to begin with. So that's my thoughts there. And then I just wanted to add that I really do appreciate the flexibility that you added in on the size. I think that's a great point, so well done there.
Counselor Zadi?
Can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, my first thought is that I, I like the idea of creating an outlet appeals process. I think that makes a lot of sense. I agree with Counselor Carmelia. I don't like parking minimums. That does not make sense to me. And related to Stratford Lakes, so city, city attorney Frankel, I sent an email with one of the actions, they had the question, and many HOAs have this question on applicability to them for what we pass here versus what the state is going to pass for A D U's. I don't know if you can provide some clarity there, but that's definitely a question that comes up a lot is, is this actually going to apply to all the HOAs? We have sixty-five percent of the city, is it sixty-five or sixty-four that is a HOA? And I think they all need clarity on the state versus the city and what actually applies to them. Is one question, I can stop there if you have an answer.
So the city hasn't yet adopted an A D U ordinance, so that's what we're talking about tonight. But as to whether the state regulations will apply the HOAs, I have to defer to the attorneys for the HOAs to interpret the state law. I won't be able to offer the HOAs legal advice on that issue.
Yeah, the, the question is, will this one apply to all of them? And will this, and how would that work with the state? But I understand if you can give them legal advice, is just, just bringing that up. Related to, can you go to slide eight, please?
As we do that, Mr. McConnell, could you comment on the intention of the city's draft ordinance with respect to HOAs?
Yes, yes. So right now, HOAs have the ability to regulate their covenant restrictions, and in many cases, as I've noted, many HOAs don't allow an accessory dwelling unit. They only allow one single-family home. Until the state legislation passes, I mean, until it, till it is implemented and goes into effect, the HOAs can maintain that control. So even if the city allows A D U's starting tomorrow, an HOA can prohibit their, their members from building one, even though the city allows it. It's somewhat similar to the city allowing chickens and bees. City may allow it, but I don't get to keep bees on my property because my HOA doesn't allow me to. So it's very similar to that. But, but the intent is to try to, try to help protect the sanctity of the HOAs and their covenants as much as, as much as the city has the power to do while we have the power to do it as well.
Yes, thank you for that and, and for the clarity. I think that, that is a question that comes up with many city-related regulations that we, laws that we pass. And I think going forward, we should be providing that clarity for A, HOAs on applicability to what you just said, Mr. McConnell. I think that's exactly what they want to hear is, okay, well, this will, we are still looking to make sure that they can maintain their independence with their covenants, but there is a state law that's in process, and that could affect them. But the city ordinance, from what you're saying, is actually likely not going to. Is that correct?
That's correct. Their, whatever is in their covenant restrictions right now that prohibits what they can do further than what the city regulation allows, then that's, that's still in effect. And the only thing that could change is that when the state legislation is fully implemented in June thirtieth of next year, if that happens, then the HOAs will no longer be able to prohibit a member from constructing an A D U on their property. Their other covenant restrictions should remain intact unless there's other state legislation that supersedes those.
Okay, so city attorney, I, I would like, for lots of issues that we talk about, if we can be proactive and think about the applicability to the sixty-five percent of the city that is not under our full con- control with HOAs. My last question is related to slide eight. In terms of legal challenges, if we pass this and the state passes their thing, are there actual legal ramifications that we would partake into if we wanted to keep what we have?
So, yeah, if I could, I, I think the, the proposal that staff is offering tonight would be a way to offer A D U's in the city while still preserving the HOA's ability to enforce their covenants. So as relates to architectural character, there would be a, an area to be cautious about. If there was a desire to provide an appeal process that could override HOAs, then the city's regulations might conflict with the HOA's ability to reg- regulate and enforce their covenants. So I think that's, that's why I asked the question about what, what are we doing with HOAs? And are we asking for their approval for A D U's? And what kind of criteria might we include in our ordinance? And would one of the criteria potentially be HOA approval? Because I think you want to be mindful of the HOA covenants, and if we offer an appeal process, maybe that's more focused on our criteria than the approval of the HOA. So I think you might not want to necessarily have this ordinance, offer an appeal process that overrides HOAs.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
What we could say is, here are some criteria to consider in terms of what is architecturally compatible. But if you're in an HOA, approval of your HOA is one of the things we are going to be looking for as we administratively approve your request.
Do we do that for sheds right now?
We don't. But I don't, I don't think it would be infeasible if the council desired to put that criteria in an A D U ordinance, if you think it makes sense.
Frankel, I think there was a second question in there from Counselor Zadi, which was, what would happen when the state legislation goes into effect and the city didn't change its ordinance?
Well, if the, if the state law is unchanged, I suppose the question is, the five-foot setback might not match our local setback, which is of the primary structure. The one extra parking space, if that, if that's included, might not match the state's requirement that there be no one minimum, no minimum parking unless there was a ban on it, on the street parking, or there was another criteria that the state offered you. If, if you met that, you could have a mi- a minimum parking requirement for an A D U. So that, that would be the question, like, what are the differences between our local approach and the state's approach following, you know, June of twenty twenty-five? We'd have to look at those differences and evaluate if we want to make an adjustment.
So the, the question is, if there are differences, what, what would be our recourse? Do we need to change or, or could we keep what we have?
So. Well, our, our code could be what it, what it is. I suppose the question would be whether or not it resulted in conflict lawsuits, we would have to see.
I, I think that's what Counselor ZD is, is asking, is if the council chooses to adopt something that doesn't fully align with the state code, when the state code becomes fully implemented, what do we do? You know, staff's recommending just amend the, the code to align with the state, but I suppose that would be a decision that the city council would have to make.
I mean, it could also be a question for the city's lobbyist. If this approach is effective, we could ask the state to consider our approach as a model. So I think there's another pathway there, too.
Anything else, Counselor Zadi?
That's all, thank you.
Counselor Dema?
My only big thing is really, is just that there's an appeal process. I agree, like, that the HOA, folks who decide to live in an HOA decide for a reason, and they expect those to be upheld, so I think that that makes sense. But those of us who've chosen not to live in, one, conversely, choose usually because we want a little bit more freedom about what we can do with our property. So I want to make sure that we just have a good process for the residents. But I also think in terms of the city, like I said, I think it makes it more defensible if, you know, you end up getting in a situation where a resident really feels that we're wrong. Additionally, it would be educational for them to be able to say, here's the process, and, you know, and be able to understand it better so that when they go out to make this kind of investment. It's not cheap. I mean, we've talked about that before. This isn't necessarily going to be some really cheap path to be able to get housing. It still could be relatively expensive, so, you know, helping them be successful makes sense to me as well, so. But otherwise, I appreciate the work on it, and it will be interesting to see what happens with the state. And I think you probably will see a variety of those different lawsuits from other municipalities to HOAs. So it'll be interesting to see.
So just a couple of questions, then also probably some thoughts on implementation side of things. So I was going to ask about the architectural standards, but I think we have enough direction there, so I'm good with getting a little more objective language in there. I also had a few questions about the setbacks. If we're trying to use the setbacks for homes that are, we have a lot of smaller lot homes and just, you know, the lots aren't huge, and so like a twenty-foot setback for the primary building or dwelling unit is pretty substantial and trying to fit anything else onto a lot. I think that is a little prohibitive to, and apply that to an A D U. I think if we have concerns about impact, which are understandable, you know, having something like a set, a setback that might be staggered as you go up in height might be something to consider versus using the primary dwelling unit setback. So for instance, instead of having a twenty-foot rear setback and you have a, you have a five-foot for the first story, and then if it's a two-story, then maybe it's ten feet or something else, but still allows you to put something back there. I will throw that out. I also had a little concern about the parking space requirement as being potentially prohibitive, particularly as we are again aging as a community, we might have more elderly without cars or just folks ideally without cars and they're using transit, ha-ha. But it, it, it could be difficult to be able to add something on-site. I am wondering if there's a concern that maybe, you know, you don't need to require a parking space for an A D U that's one bedroom, but maybe something gets triggered for two, you know, as a, some level of addressing the concern but not prohibiting things. And then on the implementation side, you know, we were just talking about the, you know, having the A D U International Residential Code being something that we would want to adopt, also thinking about tiny homes because that's even different. So, you know, to Counselor Carmelia's question about, yeah, there are, you can go on Amazon and you can find these, these units, but do we actually have something currently that we can use to evaluate those from the building code side? And so might we need to be having something kind of hand-in-hand when this thing goes?
Yes.
Okay. What's the approach, what's the, what are the thoughts there?
So in our, in our initial conversations with our chief building official, she's indicated being favorable to maybe advancing the, the A D U appendix, the twenty twenty-four IRC, hand-in-hand with what we bring to you, if the timing can work out like that. So much of the zoning regulation that we're recommending here is really tied to provisions of, of that IRC section. I understand the IRC has a separate appendix for tiny homes. As I said earlier, a tiny home can be an A D U. As I said earlier, a tiny home can be an ADU. It would probably fall within the square footage thresholds that we're recommending. It may be permitted, though, under a different set of codes because it's a tiny home and there's a different appendix for that. And so we can bring forward any necessary changes that our chief building official feels would be a good recommendation to you in conjunction with this.
Okay, so would we have to specifically call out the tiny home typology in this ordinance to be able to allow them on?
I don't feel like we would. And really, just because the zoning regulation that we're recommending for ADUs is very generic. It's tied to setbacks, height, it's a dwelling unit, it's a range of square footages. If a tiny home can meet those requirements, the only difference is it would be potentially permitted under a different permit type. So I don't want to confuse or complicate it. But I think the simple answer is yes, a tiny home can be an ADU. An ADU can be a tiny home.
Thank you for the logic puzzle.
Okay, so I heard some would like some sort of appeal process. Are there at least four that want that?
For non-HOA?
HOA first, then appeal process.
That's right, HOA first and then.
As long as, as long as Dave doesn't have heartburn. Okay, all right.
So in a, the way I imagine an appeal process, if this, if we're on the same page here, would be likely to the planning commission. If an ADU permit was denied, we would appeal the zoning requirements to the planning commission, not the building code, you know, that would be more absolute, so, okay.
And then are you okay with what they have, what they're talking about writing for the whole thing?
Well, I think we had a question about parking. I'd like us to discuss that, too.
I'm on board with Counselor Camelia and Mayor Proton with parking.
Counselor Azadi, so that's four.
So one nuanced question related to that. So would the state legislation allows the city to impose one parking space if there's no on-street parking and if there's no driveway? So you may have some houses like that, maybe not a lot of them. Would the city council want to impose the one space under those conditions? You don't have to.
I would, I liked your idea. Like, I was happy with adding the parking, but I think it's fair to say if it's two-unit, because I think you brought up good points, you could be doing like a, you know, an ADU for a mother-in-law or, you know, a relative that isn't mobile, who's not driving. So I think that's fair, but I do think there's like, if it's two-bedroom, that's maybe less likely that that's the case and you're probably going to be adding a car. So an in-between, I would be happy to support.
I mean, I think it makes sense if we comply with the state law there. If the state law is saying you have to have one for if there's no parking already. But how would they create a parking space?
So.
I don't understand.
You can actually, having teenagers, I've been looking at it. If you have rock or gravel, you can replace grass with it and you can make a driveway. It just can't be on grass.
I see, so the owner would have to create a driveway.
Do you want to come help me move some crushed gravel?
Okay, I mean, I think that makes sense. Without exception.
So, just want to make sure I understand this. So under what circumstances would we impose a single parking space? Would it be in alignment with what the state requires if you have no driveway, if you have no on-street parking?
Correct, that's what I'm.
So we'll just align it with the state on that and only impose the space on that condition?
Counselor Azadi, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. What else do you need from us?
Oh, I have to add, my one last thing was the setback.
I can explain my thinking behind that. And so I imagine there may be circumstances, I don't know how frequent they would be, where someone might want to add on bedrooms, bathrooms to their house. They have to meet the primary structure setback. Their next-door neighbor might want to add on an ADU addition to their house. And we would have two different requirements for living space. They would look the same on the outside, they would provide living space, but one's an ADU, a separate dwelling unit, and one is an addition to the house. Again, they would look and feel the same to the neighborhood and they would have the same impact, but one would have a drastically reduced setback and the other one would have a more restrictive setback. So I think my thinking there was, if it's living space, it's a house, it's not a tool shed, it's not a, you know, workshop or anything like that, that should likely comply with the same regulations that my next-door neighbor would have if they built an addition. But that was the thinking behind it.
I don't know if there's something where, you know, if it's freestanding or if it's over a garage, I mean, you're not going to have, that, it'll be just whatever the garage is.
Yeah, wouldn't be any extension horizontally of the house necessarily in all cases.
I know we have, I mean, we allow garages to get built with, I believe, smaller setbacks than the principal dwelling.
In traditional zoning, notwithstanding any ODP provisions and PUD, a detached garage would have a setback of generally five feet, like any other accessory building. The only difference between what we're talking about here and there is this is a house, living space, closer to a lot line versus a garage that's not living space. Now, if the garage was an addition to the house, have to meet this house setback. So little inconsistency there, but that's pretty common in zoning ordinances.
Anybody else? It'll get, I mean, the state will eat it up if it gets implemented, right?
If it gets implemented, we do five feet or, of course, you know, keep in mind, I mentioned this, no building can be constructed over easements, utility or otherwise, so that's always going to push the setback further if that exists. But it would generally be five feet from the state. So it'd be the rear setback, the same as an accessory structure.
Counselor Dema.
Well, I just think you have a good point if it's detached, if it's not attached, because we do allow garages and, I mean, people are in those. So I'm just trying to rectify in my head why we would allow that but not an ADU that is detached.
I just want to say, so I've been trying to figure that out as well, but I'm also saying if we have a good appeals process, we'll hear about it if we.
I suppose we can always adjust if it goes forward and we miss the mark.
And there's always the ability for somebody to apply for variance. Of course, that ties it to a hardship, there's some criteria that have to be met. You know, there is that relief route as well. But is there consensus around the setback?
By planning.
Dubious about it, but. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but I just know we have a lot of lots that'll be constrained. And the reality of building a basement, being able to convert a basement, as I was mentioning, could be very, that could be very difficult and, you know, expensive to do versus doing a small, I'm just thinking of a tiny home, which wouldn't be so intrusive. I don't know if there's like a maximum size or something of, you know, something that might be able to have a smaller setback, not as big of a mass. Maybe think on it, but.
My preference, whichever direction the city council would like to go, is we always like to try to make it simple and, you know, not a lot of if, then's if we can and make it very simple for the citizen to follow the rules, build something. So if the council's interested in that shorter setback, I think I would prefer establishing a clear setback and not necessarily having a range with variables to it that could be confusing.
I'd go for five feet.
I'm with you. And again, I mean, this is going through a review process, right? And if there's big objections, there's a planning board that will help figure this out, right? Whether it should, well.
Only if it gets, yeah, what would happen if somebody objects? Because that's not part of what we're talking about. Like, it would get done administratively. And so if some neighbor was like, what the hell, I mean, you might already be down the road, so.
In my understanding, the council's interest in the appeal was for that subjective architectural requirement, it's not for all the ADU rules. I think that avenue should likely be in the traditional zoning variance arena.
What's twenty feet for rear? Is it twenty feet for rear for a dwelling unit?
It varies. It varies from zone to zone and from PUD to PUD.
Five could be weird in some places where it's not, so I don't know if I could support that.
What other cities do? What do other cities do?
Well, I don't know the answer to that. That would require a little bit of research. There are a few of our neighbors that do allow ADUs already. We could research that.
That could be helpful. I think Denver does five feet.
Well, five feet would go ahead and align the city with the state if that was the interest.
Five feet, yes, no?
I'm with, I already said I want five feet, but.
I'm okay with it, it seems like, I'm good with aligning with the state.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes, aligned with the state.
Okay. Got it. Anything else?
I think that's, unless I'm missing anything.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
That ends our post meeting. It is nine forty-nine. And just for the record, for those listening, our first, the executive session got switched. So the first one will be over Freiko. The second one will be personnel matter. So we will now begin listening at nine forty-nine and go into executive session for our first executive session.